We are good to go, Marie.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order and we will start with a pledge of allegiance. Okay, Joe, you wanna lead that?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. And we're gonna roll right into the roll call, please, Tasia.
Bruce Blartgen.
Hello.
Katie Thermes.
Here.
Marie Kova.
Here.
Bob Gunther.
Here.
Patty Jo Forsberg.
Here.
Katherine Cranston.
Here.
Lauren Blartgen.
Here.
Thank you, Tasia. So if we could together, please read the district mission and all of you who know it, please join us, I'm taking the example from your opening day ceremonies. Together we engage, educate, and empower all learners bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Our core values, we can do those together too, please, if you remember them. We believe each and every person is capable of success, each and every person is accepted and valued. We believe in empowering all learners changes our opportunity for growth, involved communities foster strong schools, lifelong learning is essential for personal growth, and cultivating leaders. Thank you. Protocol reminders, if everyone would please just take a rundown through those. And then if I could have a motion to Lori, thank you Bob, I would like us to add our student rep report, but we also wanna introduce you two, so who wants, who gets that on or Shannon here this evening?
Sure.
Or Kelly?
Oh, I did.
Wonderful, thank you Kelly.
Yeah, these are our reps this year, Katie and Abby, and I don't wanna talk too much about them because they have a whole introduction piece within their presentation. But yeah, so they will be with us this year and maybe further than that.
Wonderful, welcome you guys, we're gonna find out where we're gonna plug you in on the agenda, so I don't remember where we used to have them, do we put them under Dr. Bezig? If anybody has a preference, just tell me where you'd like.
Under Bezig, so it's entertaining.
All right, so we'll do it like as an A4 or an A1 and slide yours down, however you do it. Great, so if you guys see that, you're down there, just a little bit further down. So with that addition to the agenda, I have a motion to approve another amendment to the agenda. Oh, sure, sure. Number 5D, to separate those positions out, please. So we'll take 5D and pull it, um... It's it rather than doing all three together as one motion to separate those out. Okay, so, yeah. We can do that on the motion, okay, that's fine. But we can do it as all separate too. All right. So we have the motion to approve the agenda with two amendments, the addition of the student reps report and their introduction, as well as potentially separating out 5D, I as three separate motions or considerations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and now, thank you very much. We'll scoop right into, I don't know that we do have, maybe this is where we could do our student reps thing. It says to have student and community recognition. Let's do it!
I think they should under reports.
Okay, sorry guys, I tried. So we're gonna go to reports, and now you get to do it.
Okay. Presentation. Okay. Let me click it. That's a bit on here, isn't it?
Yeah, it should be up.
Okay, oops, that's too far ahead. Okay, so I'm Katie Schreider.
And I'm Abby Scramstead.
And we are your new student representatives for the 2019-2020 school year.
We are both juniors this year.
And we've both been in student council for two years. So for extracurriculars, I'm in cross-country and track and student council, obviously, and then also forensics and the spring drama.
And I am part of the fall and winter dance line, as well as track in the spring. And I am also part of student council.
Okay, let's get this one next. No, okay.
Okay, so we wanted to kick off our presentation tonight, just talking about the beginning of the school year for each of our schools in the district. So the elementary has had a great start to their school year, three weeks in, they just had a Minnesota versus Wisconsin border battle coin drive, that's a mouthful, on the week of the ninth, to raise money for the food shelf, which is super cool. They raised almost $900. Kids brought in coins from home and need to put them in a packer jar or a Viking jar. And for the middle school, they also had a very good start to their school year with the fifth graders last Friday, took place in an agriculture safety day, where they discuss topics such as home, water, and electrical safety, as well as mental and physical health. And for middle school sports, they have been doing very well with the start of their season. Okay, so here's a cute picture of the middle school cross-country team that their press got made on Thursday. And then here is the seventh graders at one of their home games. All right, now on to the high schools. So as I'm sure you know, we started one-to-one at the high school this year, which means that each student gets a Chromebook to take home with them for the school year and just to keep with them. So so far, it's been a success, I would say. Teachers and students are benefiting alike. Teachers have been converting a lot of their classwork to fit to online format, which is really helpful because there's not the excuse of my dog ate my homework, 'cause your dog didn't eat your Chromebook. And also, like, there's a lot less, like, losing things, it's a lot easier to keep organized. It makes assignments and resources a lot more accessible to a lot more students, so like, if students didn't have a device or like a computer at home, now everybody has that, which is really cool. Google Classroom and classroom pages are being used a lot more to organize classwork and, like, lectures have been posted on classroom pages, which is really helpful for the flex modular schedule, because you're gonna have a conflict, you're gonna miss class at some point, so you can just go back and watch the lecture and get what you missed.
Tasia, do we have the video on them right now?
That's what I'm trying to figure out right now.
As for the year two of the flex mod at the high school, it has been going very well. And a positive part of this schedule is that students have the opportunity to take up to nine classes if they choose to do so. And the requirement per semester has been upped this year from six classes to seven, which is very good. And the master schedule has really been reworked, so that students have less conflicts with major classes, so they can worry less about having to choose between whether they would like to go to math or science, and they are able to look at both. And as you know, flex spaces have been reworked a little bit, and they are being more closely monitored with staff. And the NPR and the lobby are both spaces that are now strictly junior and seniors only. And those are more spaces that are work at your own pace and more independent, whereas spaces such as the library and the resource center have more of a hands-on learning environment, where students can interact with staff and get the help if they choose to. Okay, moving on to sports. So Somerset sports have all had super great starts to their season, kicking it off with football. So our record right now is two to three, thanks to our win against Prescott on Friday, finally. We have 55 boys out this year across all three teams. They're playing against Ellsworth, in Ellsworth on Friday, and then against New Richmond at home on October 4th, which is actually a homecoming game. And as for cheer, they've had a great start to their season, and they have many returning faces this year, which is great. They've been having a super strong start with a five-two-four record right now, they just finished or are almost done with their home game right now. They have 24 boys out this year across both of the teams, and they have a tournament at home this weekend. And girls golf, they actually have a meet today in Ellsworth, and varsity is in Hammond. They had a meet last Tuesday where they took third, which is amazing, and they scored 10 conference points. They have 11 girls out for their team this year, and it's great, and they're improving every year. All right, so volleyball has had a little bit of a rough start, but they're working super, super hard. So varsity has been playing against some really hard teams, so they've been working towards their first win. JV has been doing super well, playing against really good teams. JV2 has a record right now of three to one, that was the, no one really knew their other records. So they had their second tournament last weekend, and C Team has also had a great start to their season. So cross-country, we have a massive team this year, which is really amazing. We have somewhere around like 15 girls and like 15 boys, which is super great compared to my freshman year, we only had nine girls, barely enough for varsity team. Girls took second on Thursday in Prescott, and boys took third, and then we raced again in Osceola on Saturday, and girls took third there again, I think boys took eighth, maybe? We have a home meet October 1st during homecoming week, which is great, one of two this year. And then we're doing our annual homecoming run from New Richmond, which, if you don't know, which is where the whole cross-country team relays the ball all the way from our, like, rival school. The cross-country captains pass it off to the football captains before the game, so it's a great way to get everyone involved in the home. In the dance team, we have had a great start to our fall season and have been performing at all of the home football games. And we recently, last Friday, had our annual junior dance camp fundraiser, and it was really cool, because we had about 80 girls try out this year, or not try out, but join, from the ages of three up to eighth grade, and that's a huge fundraiser for us, so that was a really great turnout. And we're learning our competition routines soon, so that's exciting. And we had 16 girls try out for our fall team and are planning on having an additional three for our competition season. All right, on to our clubs now. Okay, so for drama, they have been very busy practicing for their upcoming musical, Beauty and the Beast, and the dates set for their performances are November 15th, 16th, and 17th. So a club that has had a little bit of a comeback this year is Yearbook, it is now run by Mrs. Kazmerek, Barry handed it off this year, and she's had a great turnout. We have so many kids involved in Yearbook this year, whether it be on the digital side or on taking pictures. So they have a really cool theme that I wanted to share with you guys, they're kinda making it a little retro, bringing it back to the Breakfast Club, and with the theme of Don't You Forget About Me, so for their cover idea, they're taking each one of the, like, stereotypical characters, and as a school, we're voting on seniors who represent the stereotypes but are like more than the stereotypes, so they'll be replacing them on the cover, which I just think is super cool. And for student council, we have 19 representatives this year, which is a few more than we've had in the past, but we've been doing a great job of working together with that. And we have been meeting since August, planning various activities such as homecoming or different community service projects that are going on throughout the district, and it's been very great. And last but not least, our upcoming events. So next week is homecoming week, which is super, super exciting, and that means lots and lots of opportunities for students and the community to get involved in sporting events and just a whole bunch of fun things. So we're kicking it off on Monday with a home boys soccer game and a home JV football game. And then on Tuesday, there will be a home cross-country meet, and they only have two of those during their season, so that's pretty cool. And there will also be a home volleyball game that night, and varsity will be playing at 7:00. Nothing on Wednesday due to groups and stuff. And on Thursday, there will be a boys soccer game, and varsity plays at 4:30. And also taking place is our annual tailgate party, night before the homecoming football game, and that will be from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock at the high school, and that's a really great opportunity for community members and students to all get together and talk and have a great time with food and games. And then, of course, Friday, we have our annual parade at 1:00, which is gonna be super fun, and then the homecoming game at 7:00 against New Richmond. So another homecoming tradition that we're bringing back this year is Stuff the Bus, and we're really trying to push it this year. So during homecoming week, each of the schools will be participating in Stuff the Bus along with the community. If you don't know what that is, it's a fundraiser and a competition between Somerset and New Richmond to raise supplies and money for our local food shelves. We've had great success with this in the elementary and middle schools, a little bit of less success in the high school, but we're really pushing it this year, and we're tying monetary and, like, canned good donations to homecoming points, so that will be added to, like, dress up days for how many people dress up per grade and like who wins the games on Friday, and so that'll be really motivation for students to get involved in that, which is really cool. All right, thank you for your time tonight. Winder pulled out.
Awesome presentation. So I want you girls to know, if you have things pressing that you need to leave for, you are free to leave whenever you like, but we are grateful to have you for however long you can stay. Thanks, girls. Does anybody have anything to add? What? Oh, you can definitely share your thoughts too, we like to hear from you. Okay. Good idea, thanks Bob. All right, so now, Dr. Bezig, see if you can talk that.
Now, here's the fun part, right Bob? Just a few items here. Construction update, you've probably seen the surveyors around here, they're almost done with their work, which is a big piece for Wold. Next month, we'll start our first construction meeting with Wold and Johnson coming here to the board, the work session, to give you an update on where they are at. Let's see, teacher contract time, you know, I put that note out last week, and I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. You know, I need to get some direction here as far as, you know, what I presented in that note I sent out was that if we, you know, we lengthen the student contact day by 20 minutes, but we do nothing with the teacher contract, I think it's roughly eight and a half days technically, would go on the end of the, you know, past when the students are here. What I'm proposing is, because of that longer day and the things that have to be done to get us out of here, I think we're gonna chew up that time, but I just need to know from you if you want a minute-by-minute accountability of it, or, you know, we still know what's gonna happen with slow days, you know, who knows what's gonna happen there, so our days are gonna vary. But with the packing and everything we need to do, I'd like to have the leeway to use those eight days over the course of the year, as far as just extra time they're gonna be putting in, that we know they're gonna be putting in. The other piece is lengthen their day out 20 minutes and they're done at the end of, at the end of the school year when the kids are gone, and we need that extra help, and so, you know, it's a one-year thing, I trust that they're, you know, we got a job to do and we're all gonna get it done, that's just my take.
Yeah, otherwise, we're gonna be asking teachers to be packing and doing things on their own time, and that's ridiculous. However, when you're adding 20 instructional minutes to the day, staff still has work that they need to be done, and when we're having IEP meetings and other things like that, those are starting later, so those also could easily go beyond. So I think it's important that we also consider the extra time the staff is putting in each and every day, they still have the work to do, and taking that 20 minutes from their end of the day and adding it to instruction, doesn't mean they're gonna have 20 minutes less work to do every day, it's going to be more work each day, and I think we should be counting that time as well.
And that's why I think, yep, they're all professionals, and we all have a job to do, and, you know, we just, I know I need to get these buildings packed up by the end of the year. And again, I think the sooner we start on things like that, but just knowing the extra time they're gonna be putting in, you know, just recognizing that time, it's gonna get put to good use. So I would leave their day, duty day alone, and then as we move forward now in the next month or two, we'll have a better handle on the construction schedule, and just exactly how we have to make these moves and what we have to do, because I wanna get going on this right away, because, you know, there's things that teachers use in September, October, they don't use the rest of the year, and some of those things can be packed up, so if we just get on it and get rolling, it's not a big crunch at the end of the year, but I'm confident they're gonna put that time in. I just know they will.
Do you agree with that? Are you all ready with that?
Yeah.
And are you? Bruce, how about you?
Of course.
There you go, okay, next?
Okay. Leave time, just again in my note, you know, I've had probably, I think maybe four or five had, that had plans, tickets in hand for that day before Thanksgiving, and also the spring break piece, and that time there is very specific makeup, it's not hanging out here for packing, what have you, so I've talked to them about ways that they can make that up, whether it's curriculum work, you know, lesson-type things, but that'll be different than that eight-and-a-half-day type piece, okay? So that'll be specific, but as we, I'm meeting tomorrow with the Christians about summer school, some of that makeup time may be in summer school, so again, I'll have a more handle on that in the next couple of weeks. So I just wanna let you know that that's the path we're walking down, unless there's something else you wanna see with that makeup time, but those days that are in the schedule that they have tickets for, that will have to be made up in some educational setting.
Any questions for Dr. Bezig? All right, and we'll scroll on to 3B, the enrollment report.
Excuse me, just one last thing with the, we're real close to getting the non-certifieds, and we wanna make sure that, because the year's ending, we don't wanna, we wanna make sure they're not losing any time and money, so we're just on the edge of getting that completed as far as their extended time, so they're not, they're not getting shorted at all, so as soon as I, because of the flus and my being masked last week, Dave and I haven't had a real good time to sit down and dot all the i's and t's, but I think they've been working on it and have a plan down for the extended time with the non-certifieds, but I just don't know all the details, but I'll bring that to you. As far as enrollment, from the start of, from what we had for the start of last year to the end of last year, it was, I think, 1506, we're up to 15, I think it's 18, so we're up 12 kids from the beginning of the year, which is, you know, it's a good sign. That's where we're at with enrollment.
Any questions on that for Dr. Bezig? Then we'll go to anything for the financial reports, you're able to look at those online too, as are our community members via the website, so if no questions there, we missed everybody at the annual meeting. I missed your company. All right, 3D, school board member reports, Bridging Somerset, did you, you had a meeting?
No, we haven't, but Beck and I are trying to get together in Bridging Somerset 2.0, and I, you know, they made comments before, we try and get that going this fall yet.
Okay, CISA, we had a meeting, and I again left my notes, let me take care. Shoot, I left mine there on the side of the meeting, I'll come back to it. Community Ed, Catherine, do you have anything?
No, not right now.
Employee council, Katie, do you have anything?
Nope, there's no meetings set up.
Memorial scholarship, Lori, I'm sorry.
Just a comment on that, I was digging out some of my pieces from like employee council from last year, I think what you wanna see, I think you wanna see a new format for those. And so October 7th, I'll bring you just what we had last year, and I'll make that changes you wanna make, because, you know, we kinda ran out of people last year, you know, we had quite a large group when we started, and we had a smaller group when we finished, and I think you need to see what the demographic of the group is, and then if there's any new things, so I think I've heard from you over the last year that you want to do something different with the employee council, so I'll bring you, I'll lay out the format, and then we can talk about work session and see just exactly what you wanna do with it.
Sounds good. All right, and Lori, I'm sorry, you were threatening to say on the memorial scholarship? Yep, we are working on updating the scholarship application. The deadlines for the application are going to be changed due to the change in the school calendar. Senior memory night has been moved ahead to May 6th. The scholarship awards, it worked well having it at the beginning of senior member, on memory night last year, so we're going to continue that, but it'll be May 6th now instead of at the end of the year. Ticket sales for all of the fall sports are covered, the 50/50 sales are going well, and the high school multimedia class is working on creating an ad, are you either of the girls in there? So would you like to tell us more about that? I understand you're going to be creating an ad to have displayed on the Score Vision at the Winter Games for the scholarship committee and the 50/50 tickets?
I am not on the project, but, so I don't have much.
Did either Trent or Shannon have anything that you wanted to add?
I just know that they're working on something to help kinda highlight what's going on.
Well, we're excited about it, the scholarship committee is excited about it, so I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Update in the next student report.
Getting back to the SOSET, I was wondering, I've had to refresh my mind, CISA does a lot for training purposes, and every year they survey to see district administrators, and I think they work with curriculum directors too, to find out what the needs are, and I think they do a pretty, pretty, really good job of trying to fit the needs that are really most pressing for districts and share those costs, so it's very interesting, always interesting to hear what's going on and be a part of that process. We're on to, if there's no more questions?
Lori, you just, you reminded me, the media class is putting together a video on the schedule, on a calendar change, and it will be out on Friday, I believe, that'll go on Facebook and what have you.
So video's gonna go up?
Are you on that one? Oh, they're on that project.
I think I'm interviewing you tomorrow.
Okay, so there's gonna be a video put together on the calendar changes, put on the website?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
It'll be, it'll be sent out like the referendum video ones, so it'll be like distributed the same way.
Terrific.
It'll shoot for Friday.
All right, sounds good.
Can't wait for the email.
So then now we're to the open forum, so if anyone has anything that, if anyone would like to chat with us directly tonight, the red cards are for that purpose. Looks like you're all just smiling and avoiding my eye contact, so if I don't have anyone, we're gonna scoop right past that to 5, the advanced services and operations, we've got 5A, the policy update, it's a second reading for 9130. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve policy 9130 with the updates as the committee is recommending, and Tasia has already put into the document.
Your sound spoken second, Patty Jo second, Lori first, all right, let's pull that up to see if there's any questions on there. We don't have it. Is there any chance we can bring that up on live or not, if that's okay?
It should be linked there.
I'm the one who doesn't have it up, I'm sorry. No, I got it ready, I just have it.
Here, come on in.
Do we have any questions on their suggested edits? Or are you okay with it as it's proposed? No question? So we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will approve 9130 with the proposed edits as presented, motion carries unanimously. Very good, on to 5B, taxable, I'm looking for a motion to recommend the school board approve the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation commissary note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed 1 million. Thank you Bob, thank you Catherine, this is customary each year to help us with short-term shortfalls. Would you say, Dave?
That's a good way to say it.
That's great, last year it was 1.5 million, this year it's 1, and last year we borrowed 200,000 for a short period of time.
So it's to help us meet payroll when those dollars haven't come to us. Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we have, people want to sign. So on to 5D, you guys are so efficient today. Recommend the school board approve, looking for a motion here, recommend the school board approve the reclassification, and you wanted this to be the first. Oh, I'm sorry, the gap model, excuse me, skipped over to things. Looking for a motion, recommend the school board approve the gap model grid as presented.
Do that on purpose?
I did not, I am, I am very, very sorry. I am really sorry. They were very calm about it. So, do, or I missed the reaction. Do I have anyone interested?
Who makes that motion?
Thank you Lori, and a second?
Second.
Thank you Bob, so what questions have we got on this one?
So I agree with the 1920, I don't agree with the 2021, setting a 2021 I, I don't agree with the twenty twenty one, setting a twenty twenty one wage increase to get them on. And that's like, I approved that percentage.
And I would like to make an amendment to my motion to address that concern.
Okay.
And my amendment is that we approve this model with the deletion of columns J, K, and L. And we revisit this during the budget process next year so that we can go a full step minimum and...
Okay, you're getting a little long for me to write it. Are you getting it, Tasia?
I think it's just.
Approve model, approve it without a date.
Exclusion of J, K, and L.
Okay, so...
There's nothing attached.
Bob, are you okay with that? Motion amended as Lori has, recommend the board approve the gap model grid as presented, deleting J, K, and L.
Yes. So basically, we're approving what we approved at the last meeting with the twenty five percent.
Yes.
We're just not doing anything for the twenty one.
Those are just projections to kind of illustrate what was happening, so that's...
And at the last meeting, for people who are in the audience, we had this document without names. Do we have that document available for the people who are here?
Yep, right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome, go ahead. So we have a motion and a second on the cable to approve the gap model grid as presented, deleting J, K, and L. Oh, J, K, and L. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. So now we're on to five D. And Lori, I know you wanted to do this in three separate ones. So would you like to make a motion to recommend the school board approve the reclassification of...
Yep, I am going to the email, so I can word it. I would like to make a motion that we reclassify two building level supervisory support staff members from classification one oh six to district-wide supervisory support staff, classification one zero eight.
You said two. You said two district-wide supervisory support staff, supervisory support staff, class one oh eight?
Reclassification of the building level supervisory support staff, level one oh six.
Yep.
To district-wide supervisory support staff.
Yep.
Level one zero eight.
One zero eight. I've got that, Tasia, if you did?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Is anyone interested in seconding that? Thank you Katie. So we've got a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on this?
I'd just like to make the comment that this is a reclassification that we've discussed over a year ago. We started discussing this reclassification.
So I'm at a loss as to which one you're choosing. Which one am I missing?
What, how is it different?
Different classifications.
It says one way down this.
I'm saying reclassify two people from one oh six to one oh eight.
They're building level supervisory staff, but they handle district responsibilities.
Right.
And there's a difference between superv, building supervisory staff.
And district.
And district supervisory staff. The only difference is that they're in a different building.
Okay, so that's why you wanted us three separate, two separate motions?
Just to separate positions.
Correct, understood. So are there any other questions?
It's confusing who we're talking about.
The ones that are district.
What's the job title?
So you've got an IT secretary and then you've got the special ed secretary.
What about IT in general? I don't remember even talking about them.
We, and you're talking about the IT coordinators?
Yes.
And that has not been brought up and it probably should be.
Okay.
The person that supports the two tech people is a district level person.
And that's what we're talking about?
Yeah, and, and we've had discussions about that at, at our cabinet level for the last year and a half or so. But taking care of all the groups first was a priority, which, and now we're coming down, getting down the line here to some of these pieces that we've been discussing.
Sure, I get it.
This one's on the table.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table to recommend the school board approve the reclassification of two building level supervisory support staff from levels one oh six to district-wide supervisory support staff, level one oh eight. Made by Lori, seconded by Katie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So then Lori, did you want to address the third one in some way?
I'll make the motion that we reclassify an administrative assistant, level one oh eight, to administrative assistant, level one ten.
Second.
Thank you Bob, thank you Lori. So that one I did not get down paged, did you? Could you say that again? So you got it?
Well, I'll take a repeat.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we reclassify an administrative assistant, level one zero eight, to administrative assistant, level one ten.
Got it.
In the request, it's...
Do we have a second yet? Yes, bye. I'm sorry, thank you.
In the request, in the last paragraph, it's talked about just making this a temporary, like a not permanent reclass of what that job is because it's kind of going to the current incumbent's strengths. But I'd like to remind the board that we need HR help. I mean, Dr. McGrath said that. And I don't feel like, I feel like if, if this is the job we're creating, we should keep it and not go back. You just need to find somebody to fill it with the qualifications to do that then. Doesn't make sense to reclass. You're supposed to reclass the job, not the person either.
And I hesitate to approve a reclassification that is relatively new. It's only come up within the last month. These other reclassifications have been on the table for over a year. And we have other reclassifications that have been on the table for over a year that haven't been addressed yet. So my concern is bringing something new and taking action on it when there are other positions that we've been talking about for a long time and we haven't taken action on it.
I don't know that we've talked about any reclassifications, other positions, and failed to talk about it for a long time.
These are the ones we know of right now.
Well, we've got the building level administrative assistants that was brought in front of the board and the IT technicians that...
Okay, well...
So that's my point. That was the point I wanted to make.
So I have a few to take care of.
And some of them that we've known for a long time. And this one is, just been brought to us within the last month.
So we have a motion and a second on the table to reclassify the administrative assistant one oh eight to administrative level, district-wide, is it? One ten?
It's creating an HR advisor from an admin assistant, is what this reclass is doing.
Made by Lori and seconded by Bob. So all those in favor, say aye. I support it.
Right.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're going to take a roll call on that, I apologize. A little bit too lost. Myself, yes?
But I'm a little confused. Can we talk about a little bit that last paragraph and whether we can keep it an HR advisor position afterward? Where?
Okay, ask me, that's the question again now.
So...
Rational?
In the HR advisor position letter.
So what's, what's happened over this past summer and spring?
Rational is good. I just want to keep the position.
I do too, I do too.
At the end, it says...
I know it does. I know, that was the recommendation there. And I think we always caveat, when we try, when we do some of these pieces, we want to make sure as we go down the road that this is, you know, we're reorganizing basically. Because, you know, we found the strengths of a person that can really help us out. And, you know, it balances us out more. And again, this never would have came to light, but we had a change in position there last year, so...
Are you suggesting you might like to put in there HR instead of administrative assistant? Or in addition to administrative assistant?
It does say to human resources.
But in the motion, do you want it?
It says on the level one.
Yeah, and it just, when you look at her, what her, what she's doing, this more fits, better fits, describes her role than what the old job was.
So I would agree. If, I'm wondering if I might be able to amend it to cross out the section that says...
But that's not part of the motion, so...
That's just a recommendation, so I would agree this and then keep it.
And call good?
So we still have a motion on the table, made by Lori and seconded by Bob. Good discussion. I would agree, but because that's not in the motion. And you don't sound like you want to amend the motion to include as moving forward or always?
I had said that, but that's...
Well, there's a motion on the table.
Yep.
So let's move on to the motion.
I'd like a roll call, vote myself, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Patty Jo?
No.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lori?
No.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Katie?
Yes.
So we have five yes and two no motion carries. Thank you. We are on to item six, the consent agenda. We have, if anyone is interested in making that all, a second?
We still got E.
Oh, I'm sorry. District-wide sub, I apologize, I took my notes over it. Thank you Bruce. Five E, I'm looking for a motion, recommend the school board approve the district-wide substitute position for the twenty nineteen twenty school year. Thank you Bob. And looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you Patty Jo. Any questions on this?
Is this person currently doing the role?
We don't know if the same person is, is available again. As I mentioned in my commentary that, you know, cost-wise, the coin's flipping in the air on that. But benefit-wise to the kids and to the district, it definitely helps to have a qualified person in here. As I mentioned also, I think I mentioned, you know, Dave's budget right now, you know, you can't point to the line item and just say, hey, we're great, we're good, we're fine. But as that develops over the next month and that, we're very confident that we're going to be, we're going to be good. And again, it's not a, that, it's not a deal killer financially, but I think benefits to have this person on hand outweighs the...
I, I can speak to that. And from a standpoint of, the kids know this person rather than just a sub coming in off, off the street. They're all qualified, they all are qualified subs. But it makes a big difference if you have relationships with those kids and, and you could, as a sub, you come in and they know who you are, it's huge. That's a huge benefit for kids.
Do you have a total cost to that position?
Dave, you have a cost on it. I'm assuming it's about a fifty thousand dollar position.
Most benefits?
What's that?
Depends when it starts for a full year, it would be about sixty-five.
So we're...
And is that including benefits, Dave? Does that include benefits?
So has a person started or do we not have one?
No, we don't have one in there right now.
So I thought we had, I guess I thought we were removing that one to make the, the numbers work before.
That's what I thought.
We've been up for discussion before and I have specifically asked the principals, was it a value? And I got back yes.
Question or clarification, please? Is sixty-five the wage and then benefits?
No, it would have been, because it's a beginning teacher salary, so it's a forty, forty-two. Yeah, and I think they said if it was full year, it'd be somewhere around sixty-five. Now it depends when it starts. So again, I mean, we can get that, but I, I'm assuming it's going to be in that fifty, fifty-five total cost. Quick math, Dave, that sound legitimate?
I mean, we've already gone over with our, I didn't, our teachers and the three positions we just approved. That we went over what we were supposed to stay in budget wise. I'm just, I know it's a help principles, I mean, I get it. But we also have a budget, sixty-five thousand. And I've heard it's not a good use of money for a school. I decided, or maybe it is a good use, but...
We'll do the math.
We raised the sub rate to a hundred and twenty dollars. Did it last year, I know it went well, but maybe we reclassify at the end of the year and find out. That's just my opinion, I...
I thought that's what we did last year. We said, let's give it a try and let's find out if they found it was valuable. I mean, I'm not in the buildings, but I asked people and they said, yes, it was valuable. That's all I'm going by.
And my concern is that sixty-five thousand dollars that we could have put in addressing needs that we still have, that we haven't addressed yet with reclassifications and...
Well, you're not going to have sixty-five thousand because you're going to be paying per day for the subs. So it's not like you're saving sixty-five thousand. You're going to have a sub every day regardless. There, there's, is there ever a day when there's not a sub on the scale?
So the savings would be the benefit.
Right.
Well, us, it'll be...
Yeah, so subtract a hundred eighty contact days times a hundred and twenty dollars. So it's, you're not going to have sixty-five thousand dollars to go on another way.
So we have a motion, are there any other questions?
It's not.
If it was a black and white piece here, because it just, it just isn't...
What are you recommending?
Well, I'm recommending we put the position in because it's good for kids.
And then, we're going to have substitutions anyway. And if I understood correctly, every day, there's somebody, so unfortunately, we'll be employing her full-time, is what it boils down to. But I, I understand your concern, there are other needs. And we've got a motion on the table to approve the district-wide sub. I'll take a roll call on this one again, made by Bob and seconded by Patty Jo. I'm going to start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Patty Jo?
No.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lori?
No.
Bruce?
No.
Katie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We have four in favor, three opposed, motion carries. I'm a substitute teacher.
Good.
You just physically couldn't do it, morally you wanted it to happen. I've been...
It happens, it's tough, not easy.
It is.
So we're on to the consent agenda then. If anyone is willing to include all of those in one motion, or would you like to separate them out?
I have some corrections to the minutes.
Okay. What would they be? We'll take the minutes separately then?
I'll take, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August nineteenth regular session.
Second.
Okay. Well, do you want to just do that one or do you want...
Please.
Okay, so we've got Lori and Catherine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First one passes. And the second one, minutes of the August nineteenth special session?
Wait, 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 wait.
She was amending.
I would like to amend the minutes.
For which one?
For the first one, August nineteenth. Did you say discussion?
I am sorry, I'm faster than you were with the, we can go back. So pretend you did not approve that, guys, go back. What amendments, Lori, would you like to make there? What amendments would you like to suggest?
In the regular session, in item two C. It says that I made an amendment, but it does not say who seconded it.
Okay, I can pull up my notes and see who did. I'm going to get there first.
Katie? Play that tape.
So that the only thing you're looking for in that one?
Well, then it relates to two D.
So can we just remove these from the consent agenda?
We've got to get them out there anyway. We've gotta get them out anyway. Okay, so, I'm sorry, tell me again where this motion is. Which one is it?
2C. It says that I asked for an amendment, but it doesn't say who seconded it. And I believe that's required for minutes, is it, or is it not?
Yeah, we do want it in there. So you're looking for, because I'm seeing a second, like, there, and is it the wrong one?
I think it might've been Bob.
I wanna say it was Bob, too, but.
But I don't know that for sure.
And I don't want to look at the video right now.
I've been accused of worse, so.
From what I've got, the amendment failed. So maybe that's why there's no second. That's what I've got on my notes. I apologize, am I looking at the wrong thing here? Or it failed?
Then D is that it carried unanimously with the amendment. What's both, it should say with the amendment.
Maybe it didn't.
Yeah, it did, because.
Let's, let's pull, we'll pull that one off, and I'll go back through my notes and see if I can find. We just need a second motion on that one. 2C.
And then 2D should say that the motion to approve the minutes of August 5th, as amended, carried unanimously.
I wasn't aware of where it was on there. I would've stuck with that.
So you do think you did?
I for sure did.
All right.
I remember now.
So we'll put Bob in there.
Insurance? Yes.
So we'll put, thank you. I'll be fine, thanks, Bob. So we'll put Bob in there. And Lori, what was the other one?
Then 2D should read that motion to approve the minutes of August 5th, 2019 work session, as amended, carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any, any further?
No, not for this one.
All right, so with those amendments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And Tasia, I see you got him, so great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So now we're on to 2A2.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August 19th special session and the minutes of the August 29th special session as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Lori. Any amendments to those? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Can you give me the first and the second again, please?
Lori and Catherine.
Thank you.
So we are on, and it's unanimous. We're on to 6A4.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th work session as presented.
And a second there. Thank you, Bob. And you have some amendments for this, Lori?
Just a very brief one. Under policy updates, let it be specific that Lori Valerian will share proposed committee changes to policy 9130 with the board.
I like that clarification. We'll give you time to put that in there. Tasia?
Is the motion a second for that one?
Yes, Lori and Bob. Can you repeat again, Lori, what you want that to say?
Lori Valerian will share proposed committee changes to policy 9130.
With the board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's let Tasia get there. To policy 9130.
Thank you.
With the board.
Give me one second to just transfer that over to the minutes. I'm going right now, please.
Yep. All right. Thank you for that clarification, Lori. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So we had their recommend the board approve the minutes with the amendment of the addition of that policy, to policy 9130 in there. Motion carried unanimously.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda items B through E.
Great. Have I got a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Patty Jo.
One piece of discussion, please. On the old bill. I was guaranteed today that we will never see any interest on this as far as, you know, if you look, the bill's dated.
June 30th.
Yeah. And, you know, we really couldn't pay him until we had a contract with him, which you approved last time, and, you know, talking about, you know, and knowing this from them, but, you know, if you look over this, there is nothing calculated on here. And he said, the only time we ever use that is for our non-public clients that stick us out five or six months. He said, don't ever worry about it. He said, because we know public entities have a machine, you know, process of getting through the cell. They know where we live, basically, so.
For adding that clarification. I asked about that earlier.
Great, so we have a motion and a second made by Lori and seconded by Patty Jo to approve consent agenda items 6B, C, D, and E. Any other questions on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, that passes unanimously, thank you. So on to the general information, we have a week off, and we're, well, kinda. Everybody hopefully participates in some way in homecoming week next week. October meeting will be October 7th, the week after homecoming, and October 21st.
Dave, did that work for you for?
Yeah. Okay. Sometimes I know it. And they're at 6:30 start times now, so that clarification, good deal. All right, so, once around. Who would like to start?
I'm good.
All right, thanks, Bob. Patty Jo, since he started?
I got nothing.
All right, Catherine. And Lori?
The reports that we're gonna start getting from Walden Market Johnson, will they be at the work sessions or the regular sessions?
Probably at the work session, I mean, it's just the way we got it started, so I mean, it's really.
So will that first one be October 7th, then?
Correct, yep.
Lori, you want to go back?
Sure. I would still like, I don't know if it's quarterly or trimester, whatever, reports from the liaison.
Officer.
Officer.
Okay. I think we asked for that.
Yep, and then he wants to do it. I was just getting them on here.
Good.
He would like to get here.
And I have another.
Okay.
For once around.
So did you say, I'm sorry, the Walden Market would be on the work session?
Right.
Okay.
And if we need to switch it somehow, but I think that's kind of the best, or just come and present, and we can have some discussion.
Okay.
And then we'll be scheduling our project oversight committee meetings before board meetings.
Okay.
So they all might fall in the same.
Very good. Lori, you said you had another one?
Yeah, the use of work sessions versus regular sessions. It was decided some time ago to have work sessions take place at committee meetings. But it seems as if, from my perspective, that we're ending up with two meetings a month because it appear it often, if not always, we're taking action at work sessions and not always getting the information for the regular session at the work session. And I guess I'd like to work on improving that. Process.
I agree.
I do too.
I agree.
We were gonna work on a calendar, too, to kind of have every year, so you knew kind of what was coming, to give us a better idea of what you might need to provide to us, too.
That's been three years.
Yeah. Anything else, Lori? How about you, Bruce?
The band and choir are going to Disney, I don't, we were, I forgot that they were going. I remember last week, so they do a bunch of fundraisers, so just, you see them around there, everyone know.
I just. Yep, beanbag thing. I just spent $100 on some beans.
Is that money now?
No, you want money now.
Oh, I.
All right.
Oh, okay.
So just to say, just say if you want to make a donation.
Yeah, just make a donation to the band and choir, to drop it out to the school or whatever.
Sounds wonderful.
The games or whatever. I just forgot about it.
Katie, did you have anything?
No, but I really want us to get back to some kind of regular order with work sessions. Everything is just kind of being added on more.
So if there's a way we can, sometimes we can, sometimes we can strive for it, yeah. So the, what I have asked was two, I've got a couple of policies I have asked Neola, or I asked to have Neola consider or show us because I went through WASB for some, with some questions that I had for them. So I'm hoping to bring, get some policies that we can review in regards to that. I'll bring them up to the work session next, hopefully Monday.
Do you want to share with us what those policies are?
Not yet, until I've actually got the information I need in a format that they would suggest. And then the second thing is, I want to apologize for the public comment because I didn't have time to review all the audios, and my recollection had us change where that table went at the same time that we had said, okay, we're gonna use this as our work session, and we're gonna let public comments be at this meeting. But I, I agree with you, our policy does not reflect that change, and I take that on myself. I should've made sure that we followed up, if that was in fact what happened. Since it would take probably 20 hours at least to go listen to each meeting and find that, the first one, even at one and three-quarter speed, it took me over two hours to listen to the thing. I don't have that kind of time right now. And I told you I'd do it after October 12th, but by October 7th, I want us to review that meeting, that policy, because we as a board should decide on public comment, how we want to, how often do we want it, because by law, we don't have to have it, but I agree with Katie that we do want to hear from them.
I asked WASB, what does our policy currently read?
Yep.
November 17th, 2017, this board passed the policy. You were a huge proponent of it, that's.
Yes, I was.
At all work sessions, special sessions, and board meetings.
But then I, my recollection is that we had it after we had new board members, and it did, I did not follow up on making sure that that got into the policy, and I take that blame. But moving forward, it can be reevaluated every year, because we do want to hear from the public. From when I look through all the agendas, we have public comment on every work session and every regular session, and not on special sessions.
Unless it's, because they're closed.
Correct, and some.
Our policy does say special sessions.
It does, and so we haven't been following our policy for everything. And it's time to reevaluate it. So we have new members, we have new projects that we want to work on. How do we want to work is what was it? So that's my hope for the October 7th work session. And then we'll see from there. So. Okay. Anything else? If not, motion to adjourn?
移到
Thank you, Katie. Anybody want a second? Thank you, Patty Jo.